All right, let's go and call tonight's city council meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, roll call. All members of council are present. Approval of tonight's agenda, do I have a motion?
No, moved.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All the comments. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak on? Any subject. We're gonna start with JJ.
My name is JJ Duran, I'm on the Parks and Recreation Committee here for the City of Scappus, and also the founder of Movies in the Park, which we're now in our fifth year. It was a tremendous success, we had hundreds of people show up, and close to 400 in our final show. Our new chief did a fantastic job doing hot dogs and hamburgers to a grateful crowd, so excellent job there, but the City of Scappus is also a supporter of this event, so this year we had raised a little bit of money, so we decided we would do awards. You know, there's the Oscar, but we named this the Jeffy after Jeff Weiss, because he worked so hard picking up trash every night at 1:00 AM.
Yeah.
So, he did great. We both worked extremely hard, it was a great time, and that's really because we worked with community partners, and everybody just had a ball. So I think Pete was there a couple times, thought it was a pretty good deal. Anyway, but, so every sponsor and supporter is getting a Jeffy this year, so I wanted to award the City of Scappus their first Movies by Moonlight Jeffy. And Scott, would you like to accept the award, and just remember, we'll start playing music if you go on too long.
I'd like to thank the Eddie.
And your barber.
Thank you, JJ. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to add that that's a fabulous event. If you haven't been to it, there was, I had two or three people I was sitting by, and rest being a number of people, and came in between 350 and 500, so.
Yeah, it was crazy.
It was really, and I just.
We ran out of hot dog hamburgers, I got a grocery outlet to donate. We were, it was amazing.
Yeah.
Amazing, and it did great.
And the whole police department was there, pretty much, too. I mean, it was terrific. JJ is the emcee, and she does a fabulous job. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jason Moon. Make sure he's got a microphone.
Mayor, council, thanks for having me today. I have some notes, so I'm gonna blast through this pretty quickly. For those that don't know me, my name is Jason Moon. I am the director of Columbia County's first small business development center. First of all, I want to thank you, the City of Scappus, for supporting the SBDC and my host institution, the Columbia Economic Team, for making this happen. So, for those that don't know, Columbia County SBDC is your resource center, helping start, run, and grow for small businesses here in Scappus. The SBDC offers free one-on-one confidential business advising, business plan development and management, loan application packaging with access to capital. They offer marketing plan strategies, connecting to accounting services and resources, navigating business regulations, hiring, managing, and retaining your team, succession planning, and a lot more. So, we're here to help businesses be the best business that they can. So I just want to leave some stats here, real quick. The center officially opened in March, sort of, under construction, but I finished some mid-year reporting with the SBA and the state office, as well as the quarterly reporting that just happened, and we've already put in over 100 hours of business advising, many of those hours right here for business owners in the City of Scappus. I'm planning on launching a business management course and some training. Right now, we're starting off a little light with some marketing strategies that I'm partnering with Keep a Local Columbia County, and those classes will start to roll out next week. So if you know of any businesses that are interested in sort of stepping up their marketing game, you still have some openings available in those classes. Part of the reason that I'm here today is that I'm embarking on what I'm calling the Listening Roadshow, so I'm hitting up every city council within the county to ensure that they feel represented by this SBDC. So, my ask is that I'm gonna email each one of you shortly with a list of questions. The same questions are going to each city within the county, and I want to be able to take those responses, to again ensure that I'm managing expectations here in Scappus, and serving the businesses in Scappus the best that I can. So, currently, I'm a one-person show, planning on hiring some business advisors here at the end of the year, or beginning of next year. I am looking for business advisors, so if you know any that want a really great rewarding part-time gig, send them my way. The other, the other part of it is I'm looking for advisory committee members. So my hope is to have, again, one representative from each city within the county, so if you know a business owner or entrepreneur here in Scappus, that would make a good advisory committee member my way as well. So, again, I appreciate your time today. I'll follow up with that email, and then hopefully I can get the agenda for a work session, you know, in October or November. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could, if you could email them individually, so that the back and forth isn't on a group email involving a quorum, that would be really helpful for all of us.
Thank you.
Alex, can we promote the business training to help maybe influence folks to participate?
Yes, absolutely, there's no problem in doing that. I know that we've actually received some materials, I think, from SET, I believe, that we had put out, and we can always put out more, so we can always use our social media channels and the newsletter to do that. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Matthew Sanchez. Oh, only says, well, Peggy, off the way, talk to him. I'm just kidding. He filled out the blue sheet, you didn't, no, I'm just kidding. Paper, you know, I'm being very bureaucratic. Good, good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Burge, city manager Raines, all the city council. Tonight, I would like to introduce Matt Sanchez. He is a certified arborist from Herd Tree Specialists, and I asked him here tonight to review over a letter which you probably all have, in regards to the tree post proposal that Terragon's two arborists sent to us. But with that, I turn this over to Matt.
Hello, everyone. Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for having me tonight. I beg to look over the arborist report that was provided by 3J Consulting.
It is, but it's not.
A little closer, you guys hear me now?
It's for the recording and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I looked over the report, Terragon Associates is an excellent firm, I've worked with them before, do great work. There were some aspects of the report that I found somewhat concerning, mainly with proximity that disturbance that is being proposed in the Grabhorn Park extension is to the LeBlanc trees. Currently, there is a recommended minimum. Currently, there's a recommended 13-foot minimum area of disturbance in the trunk of the trees to where the area of construction is occurring. While that is outside of the physical drip line of these trees, I do feel that it is very close and has potential for long-term down-the-road impacts. I believe that there is a way to compromise and come up with a solution as arborists and with the Parks and Rec Department and other planners associated with this project to increase the protection of these trees. My report that I have followed through has details on going further with the fencing, changing locations of utilities, and increasing fencing height. Right now, we don't really have much information. I realize that this is in very early stage of the project, which I think is excellent. I think this is a great time to come in and look at ways to encourage the protection of these trees. Parks are very important to every city. This is a blank slate of an area for a park, it's very obvious, but I think a very important part of parks is having trees. These trees, while they are on private property, are very well-established, they're very mature, and they offer a nice screen. And anything that we can do to protect these and enhance these and maintain these trees during and after construction is very important. I would like to be a part of this, on behalf of the LeBlanc family, and communication with Terragon in the City of Scappus would be highly requested. That is all.
I'll read this part. I sincerely hope you include Herd Tree Specialists, enabling an equitable plan moving forward. I would like Herd Tree to be the authorized arborist with any limbing, pruning, water spading, or root cutting when construction begins involving a possible driveway, parking lot, and utility trenching. Thank you for listening to Matt and myself tonight, and I look forward to your response, and will hopefully include Herd Tree Specialists collaborating with the City of Scappus, 3J Consulting, and Terragon Tree when formulating the plans for the Grabhorn area most impacting our incense cedar trees. Thank you very much for listening to us tonight.
Thank you.
Waiting for them to sit down and be done, Marissa. So the next is Marissa, she would like to speak on Grabhorn. Please let me speak after Peggy, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Marissa.
Mr. Mayor, council, and city staff, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. As a citizen, I've been closely following the Grabhorn Park development. One of the biggest pain points from the original draft design published in 2020 was the lack of community engagement on the overall design. This lack of transparency led to a change doc or campaign requesting that the proposed design be properly vetted by the citizens. As a result, the Grabhorn Ad-Hoc Committee was created, and it was a solid step towards engagement and collaboration with committee members reaching out to the community for feedback on the newest city park. After the committee presented their findings last September, there has been almost no updates provided by the city to the citizens or to the parks committee. Any information that has come to light has only been shared after citizens have requested updates on the project. That is what is very concerning to me. While council and staff continuously acknowledge the importance of transparency and collaboration with the citizens, I'm concerned the same process that was followed back in 2020 is being followed today. While no design updates have been shared, the city manager has noted on public records specific design aspects such as a long driveway that will run the length of the park to the parking area. Other design aspects were also mentioned in the arborist reports specifying distance from the trees to the curb of a roadway. It appears there are many questions the arborist reports have raised as it relates to the suggested amenities provided by the ad hoc committee that will not be addressed until a final design is made available to the public. Why haven't potential park layouts been shared with the parks committee and our citizens? Renderings that could be vetted by the community before the expensive next step of actually engineering drawings. It's concerning, over the past year, there's been little engagement with the Parks and Rec Committee to flush out questions concerned, design ideas, and such. If the committee members serve at the leisure of council, then my question to council is, what is preventing you from instructing staff to engage and collaborate with the committee to design a park for the community? These committees were created to be conduits to our citizens. It appears it is the city staff's plan to release their park design only at final completion stage, with no public input as in 2020. As an engaged citizen of Scappus, I ask that this process be questioned by council so that we can avoid disappointment as before. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move forward to new business. Oh, step back. Consent agenda, August 8th, 2022, council work session minutes, and August 8th, 2022, city council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion? Hearing a motion by Councilor McHugh, is there a second? Hearing by Councilor Santiago, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, service line warranty discussion, Mr. Supkow.
Yeah, Mayor and council, good evening. Wanted to take this opportunity tonight to discuss with you and seek your direction on a warranty program that has been presented to council previous times. This is a service that would offer warranty to those utility lines between our public mains and their homes, and in those two previous sessions that we've had, we haven't had any clear direction that this is something that council is interested in. One point of contention with it in the last discussions was the use of the logo. This program does require the use of the city's logo and endorsement to move forward. If, if that is not of interest to council, then this pretty much is a no-go right off out of the gate. I really just need to know if this is something you would like to pursue, to offer to the community?
When you're ready, I'm sorry.
No, you know me, I'm interactive.
Yeah, yeah. Peter, could you remind us, is this the same company that came to us in regards to, that we found out how to class action national lawsuit against them? Now granted, I'm not saying that it was their doing, or that it's been found, was that the same organization that had approached us, or the same system?
Yeah, there, we had identified federal litigation, I believe, involving the City of St. Louis.
And in that, I brought that to their attention, well, he did. He went back, researched it, and when they came back the second go-around, he explained what had happened and what the remedy of that was. Sounded like a one-off, but it is possible that you'll have some disagreements, and you know, it's, I guess, at the end of the day, I'm just looking for direction. If this is something, he comes from the East Coast to present, so before we move forward or not, I get the temperature of the room.
I do recall that we had some concerns and questions about it, but now, for some reason, I can't think of what those were. Does anybody remember what our concerns were? I think the logo was one of the concerns.
Right, so.
To an extent.
There were a number of things. One is that I think that there was, if you're sending things out with the city logo on them, it appears that the city is endorsing a specific product. And it, there's also the risk that people believe that the correspondence is actually from the city, and the city's asking them to enroll in a city program. And so, my understanding is that a predecessor of the company paid a fine in the UK, the United Kingdom, because this is the United Kingdom company with American operations, that was pretty significant, I think, one of the largest fines at that time, the United Kingdom, due to consumer confusion. What you had asked me to look at was whether this was the only company that operated this service or not. And that was, as I recall, that was because if there are multiple service providers, then how can the city appear to endorse one or allow the city to use? There is at least one other company that is in this, basically exclusively does this insurance between the trunk to the house, which is what people are generally responsible for. It's also through almost every company that offers home insurance, possible to get that kind of as a rider on your policy for a relatively small amount of. And I don't think that, I don't think that I had reported on that amount, I mean, we were kind of doing everything by the fly, on the fly. So, I, there are, there is at least one other business that is in its primary business, and then the other option would be kind of rider that's offered by most.
Just, just from my personal opinion, I don't support one that we would put our logo on personally. I also, you know, like, we could probably do a better job of actually promoting people to look at this as an addition to their current policy, rather than go this option of offering this policy by a company that we would put our logo on, but that's just my personal.
I'm not in favor as well.
I, I've just, kind of, first time hearing about it, I'm just wondering what the benefits are from this company that, that they can offer from a rider? Is there an additional benefits for the residents, or something that they do special?
The only benefit would be that if you had a problem, they reduce costs, obviously just paying your fees, that they would come and repair service lateral. You know, you, you could gain financially on that, because those repairs could be up to $10,000 fairly easily. You know, you're paying, I don't remember what the rates were, twenty-some dollars a month for that service, so that's the gamble side of it, just like a used car warranty was thrown out at the last set. It is similar to that, regards.
We'll be getting phone calls telling us that our pipes' warranty has just recently expired.
Yeah, so, I think a question was asked, too, is if we sign with that one company, we're not able to sign with another company, or another company can't come in, too, if I remember right? And I thought, if I remember correctly, that was a concern, too, like they were trying to kind of monopolize the city, and then using our logo, just the optics, when I heard it, all things combined, just seemed a little, lack of a better term, shady.
I think that's the majority, huh?
Thanks, Dave, for doing the work to bring this to our attention. I agree, I think that we're not at the point of adopting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
It might be a good idea, though, to let people know that they are responsible for the pipe that goes between the main and their house, because I think that is news to a lot of people. And if, if, at least if they're aware of it, whether it's this service and other service, or just through a rider on their insurance policy, you know, at least then they would know, and they wouldn't be surprised if something were happening.
Or you, you put a reminder in a utility or something?
Certainly could.
Content for Isaac online.
Dave, does the city get notified when these types of connections fail?
We do. We actually find out about them quite frequently through home inspections. When somebody goes to sell their home, they push cam down it, and they'll realize there's an issue. That happens far more frequently than an actual problem that backs up into the home. So that's usually how people are notified of the issue. These repairs probably happen to a half a dozen times a year, so it's, it's not common, but it does happen, and we get a lot of calls. We do get, you see, some upset people when they find out that it is on them and not on the city. They have to.
And the key is where the water meter is. Everything from the water meter.
Two separate things, so.
And the sewer lines.
On the water up to the meter is us. We do take care of that. This is primarily on the sanitary sewer and any storm connections that they have out to the meter. And the water would be from the meter to the home is a part of this program.
Rider, though, could cover all three of those areas.
I am not an insurance person, I can't.
I'm saying it could. I'm not licensed to sell such products, so I not represent that.
I've never heard of a homeowner program, but I'm not saying that doesn't.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Tim.
All right, next item. Ordinance number 904, ordinance renaming Sixth Street to Southeast Sixth Court.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have Planning Department intern NJ Johnson with me tonight, and he would like to present this to you.
Evening, Mayor, Council. So, we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission to rename a portion of Sixth Street to Southeast Sixth Court. I want to start by having you take a look at the vicinity map, which is in your council packet under page 119. Sort of gives a little bit of a context, since it's an interesting street to be renaming. So, when this street was recorded in 1998, it was named without a directional indicator, so most streets are southeast, northwest. This is just Sixth Street is the way it was recorded over 20 years ago. And at the time, it was also planned to extend further north. As you can see on the map, it is just that small section still. So when it was named a street back then, it had plans to extend north. Now with the adoption of the transportation system master plan, it doesn't have, it will not extend north. So, given that it's offset and discontinuous with Southeast Sixth Street, it's not, it's not, what's the word? It's not analogous to a definition of a street in terms of our municipal code. It, it's much more in line with a court, if you look at the definitions of all of them, which are in the packet further. We have now no residents that actually live on this portion of Sixth Street, but we're going to. There's a nine-lot subdivision, Thompson Woods. And with that, it sort of brought up this issue of the discontinuity with our municipal code and what it's currently named. So, the Planning Commission has recommended to you all that we rename it to Southeast Sixth Court. The procedural and code requirements are in the packet as well. They're attached under the Planning Commission's staff report, and they're in the council packet, page 121 to 123. When the Planning Commission reviewed this, they adopted it unanimously, and there was no public comment in support or against. And so, the recommended motion, which is also on page 117, is I move council adopt ordinance 904 to rename Sixth Street to Southeast Sixth Court.
Thank you, MJ. So this is a public hearing, so why don't we go into the public hearing? I open up the public hearing, is there anyone that would like to comment on ordinance number 904? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and put it up for council discussion. Any discussion? NJ, was there a sign already installed there?
Yes, there was. There was a sign installed, and the sign says Southeast Sixth Court. This is a process we've been working on for a while, and this would conclude the process, and we would really love for you guys to approve this. It was Chief Jeff Pritchard who brought this to our attention, absolutely did not want the sign to say Sixth Street. It creates a lot of confusion for emergency responders, and so this really was something that he has been driving to get done. So we just want to make sure there's no issues on the back end when those houses go to get financing. We need to make sure that the site is matches what the tax assessor has, and, you know, everything's in line the way it should be, so that we don't have issues down the road.
I suggest that council adopt ordinance 904 to rename Sixth Street to Southeast Sixth Court.
Hearing a motion, the council adopt ordinance number 904 to rename Sixth Street to Southeast Sixth Court. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. The motion was made by Councilor Santiago, seconded by Councilor McHugh. So, ordinance number 904 will be on first, is on first reading. Ordinance number 904, an ordinance renaming Sixth Street to Southeast Sixth Court is on first reading, and we'll come back at our next regularly scheduled council meeting for second reading and a vote. All right. Now, next item, item number four, discussion on holding a hearing for complaints received. Mr. Watts.
So, there had been a complaint, and we had talked about the procedure for hearing that complaint. Council had decided that, you know, that it preferred what's called a hearing in REM, and that both participants be given the opportunity to be heard, et cetera. The complaint has indicated that they do not want to appear in person, prosecute the complaint essentially, but also did not want to withdraw the complaint. So I believe their position was that council had all the information that was out there in the. council had all the information that was out there in the emails and that's, um, all they, there was nothing additional to provide. Right? And then that person also resigned from that committee. So the question, the question for you is whether you want to, um, continue to hear the complaint, knowing that the, um, the complaint will not be participating.
I think it's a waste of time.
Think that there should be a process and procedure for it not to happen again. I think there should be something invented, so.
Mr. Mayor. So I, I agree. I think this is a, uh, opportunity to learn and get something established, um, to deal with these types of things going forward. So we're not flying by the seat of our pants. Uh, hopefully this doesn't happen again, but in case it does. Um, the other thing I would ask is if anybody is contemplating, um, wanting this to go forward is do you know of any other complaint process like this where if, um, somebody doesn't want to participate, that it continues? I mean, I, I don't. It's all, it almost reminds me of, well, it's not really, it's not an anonymous complaint, but under the um, typical circumstances, council would hear the complaint and then be able to ask questions. This doesn't, in my mind, allow us to ask questions. And a lot of it is kind of all over the place.
I mean, this would be similar to somebody, and, and again, I'm not suggesting this rises to the, this, the level that I'm suggesting, oh, it's just analogous. This would be similar to somebody filing a police report. And then if the DA decided to bring charges saying that they were not going to participate as a witness. So there, that doesn't mean that there, there is no evidence. That doesn't mean that there is no documentation. Um, but it does mean that, you know, in, in there are instances where that happens and um, people decide to follow through in their instances where they decide that, um, that they either don't have enough information or maybe their concerns about due process, something of that nature. So I, I don't know. I mean, again, there's so little in your code about what this looks like that everybody is kind of guessing, myself included. Um, and how much of it would be just assessing? I don't think there's any question about the validity of the emails. Everybody agrees that the emails were sent. It's just a question of would you, as a council, believe you had enough information to make a informed decision? And do you think that not having the ability to ask questions would be enough of a barrier that would make you decide in this instance not to move forward?
Uh, Alex, does the city for their own staff have a harassment policy?
Yes.
And I feel like this is where the opportunity exists, is that we don't have continuity in holding our committees and our council to the same policy that we would hold our city staff as they conduct business with the community. And so I do see that there is an urgent need uh, for us to identify how we address these particular issues when it's brought to our attention. Um, from my understanding, all of the committees are via appointment with council's approval, uh, with the appointment proposed by the mayor. And so thinking of the current process of how we bring folks into the civic engagement, uh, committees, right? And, and that's one thing that we really want to be able to, to really boost in gauging with our community is that those people feel comfortable and confident to come into these spaces and be an active participant. If we don't have a way to, I don't want to say regulate it, but at least have a checks and balance to ensure that business can be conducted in a safe and respectful environment. Um, because based on the email exchange that I see here, it's something that we do need to address. Because retention of these particular committee members and also how it reflects on our community as a whole, is something that I think, um, we, we need to lift each other up and uphold each other. And I was not present at these conversations, even if they were via email. So I would say it would be great to be able to understand from all parties involved if they would like to explain anything uh, that, that we would be giving them their, an opportunity to provide that input to council.
Um, I agree, um, with you and, and also it's a volunteer opportunity, right, in community, and we want people to volunteer. And by having this type of uh, behavior, it's not encouraging a community to volunteer and be part of these committees. So we, I, I agree with you completely.
I'm just glad we don't have to wash our dirty laundry in public like we were leaning toward before. I, I really liked the idea that Isaac suggested in there to do some kind of private resolution through the mayor. I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but, uh, that was one of his, that was his suggestion and his, uh, provided, uh, the citizens involved with this. So it just seems to me that these things can be resolved one way or another without making a public issue. Just going to discourage, like Counsel Santiago said, is just going to discourage people who want to be volunteers in our system. Like to see something else, like it's already been suggested that we move forward with another plan that these things can be taken care of, but not in the public. That's necessary.
Unfortunately, this isn't the only committee that has strife or issues currently. Um, which just says to me that if we're appointing people to participate in these committees, then there needs to be some sort of method as to which it's not a continual reminder that these are the bylaws your committee committed to. This is how you can, this is what you committed to, you know, you, you know, this sort of, um, way of conduct in these meetings, right? And so how many times should staff members or chairs remind committee members that this is how they should engage themselves at some point? If, if the chair or other members are coming to the staff member assigned to that committee and saying, this isn't working, this is a toxic environment, this committee is not moving forward. Um, then I think that it's appropriate that, I mean, and when the staff is asking the mayor for help, that he is then setting up meetings, they, whoever is mayor, sets up um, a meeting with these individuals to try and solve the problem. But then at some point, it would come before council for approval of removal. Because we approve that they're put on the committee to begin with. So I, it.
Do we have a process beyond, beyond what we currently have? What's?
But we don't really have that process right now, because you're not meeting with the people that have.
We also don't really have a process for removing.
That's my point. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, so question with this, um, because with this, if I remember correctly, the underlying issue was contention about attendance. So I think this is an opportunity to look at all of those issues. In this case, the thing that caused this thing to happen was because somebody wasn't attending. So we appoint people to these committees because they need to attend and we need them to attend. So I think this is an opportunity to look at all of those different aspects and we need to address them. Peter, with any of the cities that you work with, do they have anything established that we can maybe, and so we don't have to reinvent the wheel here? That we can maybe bottle something after?
But, and this isn't, this isn't giving me legal advice. This is just making an observation. Um, you kind of have two categories of, of committees. So you have ones that everything they do is very well defined. So we can tell you exactly every application that needs to go in front of your planning uh, commission or not. We know exactly what your, your budget committee does and what they don't do. And neither of those committees has any discretion in saying we're going to task ourselves with this, or we're not going to take on this task. Because everything is very defined and very regulated and everybody understands the rules. So one of the, and you know, your budget committee won't meet for, you know, eight months out of the year or however long it is. One of the challenges with coming up with, I'll call them ad hoc committees, is that we don't really have any of the, those definitions. So what are they tasked with? How often do they meet? Are they identifying projects or are those projects identified by you as a city council? Do they have the discretion, um, to decide to take on certain things? Or to say, no, we prefer not to take on certain things? Those are all elements of these committees that, um, just aren't defined. And, and I think that there's a lot of confusion between the members of those committees and staff as to, okay, what are we supposed to do? And so if you guys are going to take a kind of more of a holistic vision of what are the core elements that we want these kind of subject matter experts in some respects to provide us with? How do we want to convene them or how often? And then what, making sure that they have expectations as far as things like attendance? Then, you know, maybe that would be more of a holistic look, because I don't think we're having these issues with the well-defined committees. I think we're having the issues with the kind of ad hoc ones.
I couldn't agree with that statement more. And I think that it becomes very difficult for participants in the committee to work together in a positive manner when maybe certain committee members have, quote, pet projects or interests. Um, and they may not be goals of the entire group. However, some of those non-defined ad hoc committees, they come up with goals, but we never, I mean, I was speaking to a committee member on a committee and they were talking about some work that they were doing to meet a goal that they had. And the goal that they have requires funding. It requires, um, implementation of something. You would think then that the committee would maybe present to the council and say, this is the work that we're doing right now. We're starting to research this. Um, this is our hope. Because they're an advisory committee. And so for them then to say, well, we came up with this whole big project and we did all this work and now you're not going to write us the check for it. There wasn't any collaboration there. I, like, you went off on your own and decided that this was important to your group, but and, and that's because, again, there's not a definition of what we are asking them to, to do. I wouldn't, I would say we, there are things that we would like these committees to do. However, it might not require them to be meeting every month to do it. And sometimes these committees, in my opinion, have ebbs and flows, right? And there are certain times when there's a big project like the Parks Master Plan, and then sometimes there's the, you know, Grabhorn Project and sometimes, you know, it like, I think that we need to definitely make some sort of a work session that defines committees, how they function, what individual committee looks like, how they're reporting to us, um, how they're functioning amongst themselves. Because I do feel that the couple that we have that don't have parameters, those are the ones that are really struggling right now. And that's not fair to them because they're giving their time, their personal time to be a part of that. And it needs to be positive worth their while and beneficial to the city.
I agree with you, code of conduct, to add that to your list of, I, you know, uh, but to go back to, um, Counselor Miller's, as far as attendance. Um, because of COVID, everything was, you know, we had the virtual option. Um, and I believe sometimes in, in this particular case, there was, this person was on, online. Um, I myself have to admit that there are some times that I did, as a, as a committee member, attended online versus in person because of the environment. So again, how are people going to show up in person when there's a toxic, and if the room is toxic? So again, I think that we should, I don't know if it's with you two, the mayor and, um, President Council, um, you meet and put up these codes and requirements and, uh, or, and then we all agree as council. I think that's the best we can do.
As far as the attendance issue, online attendance is accounted as.
Right.
Yeah, I, that's the way I was thinking of it.
I mean, I, I understand that is, that's part of state law now. Um, I think the key is me. If you've missed, I've seen this in some some codes. I don't know if they were city codes or other organizational structures. Miss three meetings, you're automatically off the committee without an excuse. So you know.
Usually unexcused, but yeah, if you have three unexcused absences is, is pretty common language in different committees.
And reality is, is it's not that hard to call up, send a text. I think most of us on council have sent a text in to either me or Susan saying, I can't make it. And we don't even have that requirement. Uh, you know, I mean, we could put that on our committees. That just says, just contact the staff person in charge, but we have to have that in the code. Says free, you're unexcused and you're just clearly not that interested in the committee.
You're just not able to commit your time to it.
Exactly. Interest stopping, that's what I meant. And then, you know, work through a code of conduct. And, you know, there's, there should be this expectation of people treating each other respectfully at all committee meetings and.
And who is going to vote that person out? Is that the committee or is that council?
The council ultimately. But I think that's the other thing we really don't have is, we don't, I mean, I look at our code. Person gets appointed, there's no, nothing that says that council can even vote them off.
I mean, the language is definitely, there's, there's language in there, but it's really ambiguous.
Well, I think the language, though, is in the bylaws. I mean, it simply says that once the person misses three meetings, that the committee can recommend a council that they be removed, in which case council can then remove them. So that does state that in the bylaws currently.
And, and does it say if they are not following team agreements or the?
I don't know if it actually goes into specifics about, um,
How they conduct.
Behavior. Yeah, I, I think that actually is of more relegated to the code and is more kind of generic language, as you've seen when we've actually looked up, um, how complaints are handled in the code.
Mr. Mayor. So I kind of want to piggyback a little bit off of, uh, what Council President Gryson said earlier, and there's been, I, again, I think this is an opportunity to holistically look at how we form committees in the beginning and how they function. There's been a few times with our existing committees where, um, I felt bad for them because they're wasting their time doing things that we'll never be able to rely on the information they got. And if we're making them think that we can rely on that information too, I also feel bad about that. We shouldn't have committee members contacting state officials. We're never going to be able to rely on that information. That would be something that we would always source through legal counsel or whoever's professional service fits within that subject matter. You wouldn't even have a staff member that works, you know, in a different area contacting Department of Fish and Wildlife or something. Normal, if it's a regulation type thing, it's probably always going to be ran through our legal counsel because that is the proper channel that it gets ran through. So that we can rely on it to make a decision for the city and not incur on some legal issues. So all of that, to say again, I circle back to that we really need to be clear with these committees what their scope is and what their lane is. Because, and I, I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way or diminish them in any way. But there's just some things that we cannot, from a legal perspective and a government perspective, we cannot rely on appointed committee members to be going and sourcing this information and then reporting it back for us to rely on. They don't know the questions to ask, like our legal counsel knows the questions to ask. And again, I say that with the utmost respect and appreciation, but that's just the reality. That's my reality anyway.
Well, little different perspective on this. Uh, you know, I do think we need a code of conduct on it. We already have bylaws, because I know when I was on the park and rec committee, we, we made it clear that, you know, the chairman at the time made it clear that you expected ten meetings and if you missed three, you were likely eligible to be, uh, dropped off the committee. But I really think it's important that the committee feel like they've got, uh, role to play, you know? And I think it's, uh, if we keep cutting back on what we, firing what we don't want them to do, uh, I think we're going to lose some of our creativity. And I don't think there's a committee out there that doesn't understand that they are an advisory committee. Though the park and rec committee knows they are an advisory committee. So I don't think that's an issue. I've never heard of them say, this is our advice now funded. Never heard them say that, or even close to that. Uh, I think that there's a role for them that's really, really important. And we should support them as much as we can. If they're out of bounds, we need to communicate that to them. Each of those committees have a staff member represented at their meetings. So me, that role falls to that staff member to communicate that. But I. But I have a concern that we're going to, you know, do some of our volunteers because you don't feel like we're supporting them. My take.
Okay, I'll open that. So Pete, I, I agree with you, but I think, and, and for where we're at now, I think that's a very real thing. And, you know, if we, if we establish these things in the very beginning and we manage expectations, so to speak, and what everybody's duties were, that would be a different story now with where we're at, because these committees are already formed. I could see that happening. So I do think we need to be cognizant of that. But again, to me, this is a learning thing. I think we've, we're learning a lot here that we need to make clear what the expectations and the scope is of these advisory committees.
We're not just seeing that because they don't always agree with what we think. Just saying that.
Say that, say that again.
There, there's sometimes there's a little contentious, what they would like to see and what we are allowed to provide for them or.
Uh, no, I, I was.
I, I think that can be confused. I don't think we want to cut their, you know, allow them to, less creative than what they are and how they deal with things. Because that's what they're there for. They're to advise us. And so if you're advising, you know, you might advise things that aren't going to add up. We understand that. They understand that.
And I, I was speaking to the specific point of, you know, once people start doing something and then you go and pull the reins back, yeah, that's not going to be perceived very well. So I was agreeing with you that, yeah, that would probably be the case in this situation. And, and that's just in general with everything. I wasn't, I wasn't disagreeing with what you're saying.
I wasn't really talking to you directly either.
Okay.
But I do think we put a conduct is a really good thing to have, like we have for our council.
So like currently, if there is a chair of a committee that struggles with members that are on the committee and they have voiced that to staff, then the protocol is then staff voices that the mayor. And then the hope is that that becomes somewhat resolved. And then the mayor is communicating with us that there's an issue, I've handled it, or I've made the decision I'd like to propose that so-and-so is removed off of this committee. Is that kind of how it's set up at this point or?
Generally speaking, yes. And then also to Council McHugh's point, I would point out that staff has and does regularly point out the roles that they've been assigned in their bylaws. We have team agreements that they agree to every year. So I really don't feel like the issue is a lack of staff communicating what their role is, at least to the best of our knowledge. If council wants something different, I feel like there needs to be direction from council. They are your committees. They advise you. All staff is really doing is, you know, providing support to them and then communicating anything we hear from you all, you know, back to them. So we can certainly, you know, continue to be that messenger. But we're, you know, it, it's really up to, up to council how you want this to go. They are your committees.
Thank you. I, I agree that staff should not be person to, that the committee or committee members should be on, on and get all their answers and questions right there and then. I've seen that happen. I think that for staff, if they're, if they do long hours, they're, you know, these committees go to seven, eight PM, sometimes longer, and they're there to report, to document, to run the meeting, and then they report back to the council and to the rest of the staff. I think that their role should be also defined. This is what you guys are staff. They have, they're, they're the staff's role is defined, right? And I think they sometimes do above and beyond. In my, the way I observed. So if the staff has their roles, I think the committees and the chairs should have their role set. And just to come to your point, I, I think that having a code of conduct and just having the members be courteous to each other, I don't think that's going to really back their creativity. I mean, that's just what I'm.
That wasn't, that wasn't.
Right, okay.
Is city staff looking for a directive from council this evening in regards to the short term or long term?
So I think all we're really looking for this evening is whether or not there's going to be any future steps on the actual complaint that was received. That's all we're looking for this evening. I think in terms of the committees in general, that's a bigger conversation and we could certainly start looking at, you know, potential changes to code and, and things like that for you all to consider at a later time. But that's all we really need to know tonight is actually about the complaint.
So, end of the day, what does council want to do?
Hey, for me, I don't think this moves forward. And to the bigger point, I think that just setting expectations very clearly in the beginning is what will prevent a lot of this, which is what I was trying to communicate during this whole time, basically.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that, I don't think we can take this any further. But in the, you know, future, I think that having some more definition of roles and the, you know, the possibility of looking at a escalation plan would be good, just to have something in place. So.
I'm not in favor of hearing any more about this complaint. And I would just hope that in the future, as staff, maybe if staff is observing certain behaviors in these settings and they report to you, and then you're directly reporting to the mayor and the mayor is handling those issues.
I would just say I'm really discouraged by the, the communication that was shared between this, the, the parties involved in this particular issue. I, I hope that we do treat each other with kindness and respect and understanding. And based on the dialogue and the exchange here, I question that. Question if that is what each and every person is bringing to that committee. So I am okay with moving on and understanding where we are in, in regards to this particular situation. But I would absolutely ask that staff take the time and resources to deliver to us at least best practices to potentially adopt, to create structure for our committees and unfortunately, creating roles and responsibilities and understanding what the code of conduct is and performing as a part of the committee. Thank you.
So going back to the initial question that we were going to have a public hearing on this. So but in the future, is what I'm hearing, that this kind of issue comes up again, it will be to a private setting with the mayor. Is that correct?
I'm, we need to change the code. Need to change the code in order to accomplish that. So that's what we're contemplating. Yes.
That need be put into this kind of motion or would that be something the staff would come back with us and with the?
We'll come back with something. Everyone seems to agree on that.
I'm sure we're talking.
Yes.
There is a legal question there though too. So we need a legal opinion that we can do that before we get to next question.
My only point was that in the interim, these are council-appointed committees. And until we adopt something, communication from staff goes to him. And then he needs to be communicate, whether it's in a public setting or an email that, you know, is a not reply all or whatever, that's saying, letting you know there's some, some issues happening in this committee. I've met with them. It's, I, I, I'm not suggesting that's a permanent thing, but this behavior is happening and and continues to happen. It's not just this complaint. So and I'm not saying with these individuals or this committee specifically, but that I'm sure before we adopt something as it does often, these not formal complaints, but these complaints will continue.
Okay. So my, my, I, what I suggest is just how you appointed the committee member there. I think they, how they were, you, you approved them and then we approved them, you know, right? I think that in this case, it can be probably do the reverse action.
Yeah, that's the.
Because that's already something implemented. And, and then for, for future, we should have something in place documented.
I don't think we can do anything with this situation.
We can't.
Except acknowledge it.
Yeah.
Discuss it. Think kind of.
You know, overarching for me, I think that committees need to their advisory committees to the council. Well, if council goal is to rewrite master plan under that committee, that committee is going to be the advisory committee for that. That's the task that the council is assigned to that committee to advise us on. And I think half the problem happens when you start chasing squirrels. And it happens on any committee. You start just, committee members and no offense to the community, their heart's in the right place. Every single time you see it, their hearts are in the right place. But it just, you're taking away time from what the council is asking the whether it's designing a park. Or it's, you know, they're going to advise us adding new park and so replacing them, you know, those are the advice that we want to hear from them. And the big one, obviously the master plan, you know, because we've got four park sites waiting to be developed. Between Chapman Landing, Cat Head Park, Grabhorn, and Vista still needs to be co-created or developed. The future is going to be, need a plan that overwhelmingly, because the master plan is where we get the grant money to pay for these parks. Not coming out of general fund money. It's not coming out of Parks SDCs pays a little bit. But, you know, the parks gone from zero to four right now over time, when we could afford to build them, when the opportunity came, we got the property and we did it. But it's money and having community input. The Parks Committee should be that community input for that, where they receive that community input. But they need to be focused on these, this park, park master plan. Other goals of the council. Look, if we want to add, the reality is adding, adding things to parks is always going to happen. Veterans Park got built. First thing that was added, Dog Park. So some money, money was raised. The Bachi Court. The DFW tribute to all the armed forces, the the display up there is, you know, funded and built by the DFW. But parks in some ways are organic. So they keep at, the different things change and my understanding is that the playground equipment and I missed the meeting. Ready to be replaced. I remember when that park was built and I remember the different plans and I I actually took the two options to my niece and nephew who were at age kids at the time and said, which one do you like better? The one that they chose, I just said, well, this is the one that my niece and nephew chose. They thought it would be really fun. And that's kind of the one we got in line. But it was, you know, reaching out to the people that use it, that you knew. And and so it's, but the Parks Committee, I feel like, you know, whenever there's going to be some, just a change to something in the park, let's get their advice. Let's them included so that they're staying focused on what we need them to do, not it's not a committee of brainstorming. It's a committee to advise us on what to do with our parks, the master plan over the top of it. So I think we need to focus, and this should be the, with the economic development. Economic development is a little more difficult because we have the Columbia Economic Team that does major stuff. We can't really do recruitment in a city committee where public records are very, that would be make things public that these businesses don't want public when they're looking at sites. Which is the reason why you have the Columbia Economic Team, which is a private organization. But there are projects that we can focus them on doing. And if it means they only meet every other meet month or once a month and whatever, depending on the projects, that's fine. As long as, you know, bagel sandwiches are still there.
If we could have the option of the, by the time the new year comes around and we've got the liaison assigned to these committees and there's a staff member assigned to the committees and there's a chair that's been voted in by these committees. I think it would be helpful if it was just like a half hour work session at the beginning of the year that said, these are the goals your committee gave to us that you have for yourselves. And here's council goals. And it looks like these are all sorts of, you know, great things that we want and you want. And so this is your plan for the year. And then the expectation is in order to get this done, you might need to meet once a month. Maybe you don't. And the expectation is then at the end of the year, when you give your review or, you know, they, they're welcome anytime to share what they're doing in these committees. They're doing great things. Then we can say, okay, met that goal, didn't meet that goal, but we do it more together. I feel like I feel like there are just separate things happening from the goals that they've either made themselves or we've given them. And just focusing on those tasks and leaving it at that for the year, not a bunch of other added side interests, sort of speak. What? Deliverables, like. Yeah. We, you have to give us deliverables. We have to, you know, we have to give the community deliverables. So you can sit and talk and brainstorm and but what are we presenting at the end of the day? Measurable. Great. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? But direction is, that direction.
And then we'll resume EDC meetings in October. I think, I think this month had been canceled, but.
Yes, please.
All right. Next, uh, first thing, this Friday night, Adventure Fest starts, kicks off with a movie at Veterans Park at 8:00 PM. On the 10th is the Scappy's Adventure Festival, starting at 10 AM and the Run It, Run With Neil at 8 AM. Please run it slow enough where you finish at 10 AM. The Farmers Market is still that day from 9 AM to 2 PM in its normal position. The next Parks and Rec Committee meeting is six o'clock on September 15th.
I believe that's been moved to the 21st because of a staffing conflict.
Okay, perfect. The September 17th, the Out of Darkness Walk at Heritage Park. Then Farmers Market again, seven, 9 AM to 2 PM. Our next council meeting is Monday, the September 19th, work session at six o'clock, City Council, 7, 7 PM. Alex, you have anything?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to seeing everybody on Saturday for Adventure Fest. The city will have a booth and we'll have staff members at that. We'll have some information on the 50-year plan. I know the chief will have some staff there and then I'll be there for part of the day as well. And we'll have a couple other folks. I do want to thank the chief for all of his work for the movies and the park, doing that. And then just in general, also, I, I just wanted to say specifically to the staff members in the room and also the ones that aren't, just that the staff is really, really dedicated. They work hard. They're professionals. They really take a lot of time and care with what they do. Sometimes I think there are things that are said about them in here that are really negative. I think it's hurtful to morale and I don't think it's reflective of the service they provide. So I wanted to really make it clear that I really appreciate them and they do great work.
We don't, no, we don't give microphones to attorneys.
I never get.
Never on the. Already seven politicians that are getting.
Want to speak in my place, more than welcome to.
No, I better not.
Right. So as, as of this month, we're up to 250 cases. We're moving along hiring. So we now have two new officers that both started. They assisted the entire month with movies, which was wonderful. Unfortunately, while we will be fully staffed, I'm hoping no later than mid-October, academy classes are killing us. So we won't be fully operational till next year. So as it is right now, one will be attending the academy in December. The second one will not be starting till February. And I imagine even if I can get the other two hired, they're not going to make the February class. So we, we do have one that's currently scheduled for his medical and his psychological next week. We have one in backgrounds and then we have another interview scheduled for the ninth for a lateral position. We did hire a lieutenant. He's currently in backgrounds. So I hope to have him on board very soon. And we're going to be moving forward. And we're going to be moving forward. We're speaking to the union today. And we're going to be looking to start fundraising to purchase our first canine. So looking, you know, trying to move the department forward and offer opportunities. The community event in the park was the first time I've ever seen anything like that. And I think she downplayed it there. It was, we ran out of food the first night and overall, we cooked over a thousand hot dog and hamburgers for all four weeks. So it was just, it was awesome. And me and the two new officers will be there on Saturday to make introductions. We have been walking through the schools, getting ready. And I think, and I'm going to send them to the schools to have lunch with the kids until they go off to the academy, till we can get some FTO training available for them. So we're moving along.
Yeah.
So our public works cruiser currently, as you've seen, out striping. We're doing some of the yellow. We'd received some bad news from the county. We typically partner with them for all of the yellow striping throughout. They just broke the news to us last week that they were late in getting their paint. They're just getting started. So they probably will not be striping for us this year. So we're doing the best we can with our little walk behind striper, just to get the stuff that's critical around intersections that's wearing. So you'll see that. The other thing is, is as you know, the candle was painted. That's the first of the utility work that'll start now. We are communicating with the construction of the wick. It's about two months out, give or take. It's in the hands of a neon specialist right now, who I guess is very limited these days. So candle is moving forward. So. Oh, and then the crews are also getting ready for the Adventure Fest. So we'll see how many veterans this week.
Anything, Lori?
I don't have anything prepared, but I'll just say real quick, we did receive a grant from Business Organ to complete the additional analysis related to the letter of map revision that the SCAPU's Drainage Improvement Company is in the middle of working on. So that's great. We have the signed contracts today. So we'll get that work started. And then Peter did send an email earlier today in regards to some land use applications that will be coming your way. One, just one point of clarification, one of the applications in particular, the council will be the approval body on. I would ask please that you are careful with conversations outside of this room. Ideally, we would have very little ex parte contact. If you do have contact, that you would need to declare that on the record and let others know if you can remain impartial. So I would just ask that you, you know, if you have questions about that, there's an ethics commission at the state level you can check with them on. You can always reach out to staff as well or to Peter. My plan, because it is such a needy application for you all to review, I know you're not land use planners. It's going to be a lot of information. The planning commission will hear the application first and will make a recommendation to council.